Regular meeting number 53 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. In lieu of prayer this evening, if you just could stand, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I can adjourn the dispens with the reading of the Journal. Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Six weeks communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda. They'll be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Before we go to resolutions, let me say happy birthday to our clerk, Clerk Blevins. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Resolutions from members of council. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, President Klein. As I read the title of this resolution, I'd like to invite to the podium Monica Sarzuela of the Women's Fund of Central Ohio, Azlin Rodriguez from the Women's Economic and Leadership Development, WELD, Laire Marin Markham of Ohio Latina Affairs Commission and Latina Mentoring Academy, and a WELD board member, and Erin Beck, who is a policy advisor in the mayor's office representing the Columbus Women's Commission. Today, I'm presenting Resolution 0288X-2017 to recognize November 2nd, 2017 as Latino Women's Equal Pay Day. Latino Women's Equal Pay Day represents the day that Latino women must work to earn the salary that, on average, non-Hispanic white men earn in the previous year alone. November 2nd is that day. An extra, that's Thursday, by the way. I know it's October 30th. November 2nd means an extra 10 months of work to earn the same salary, again, that non-Hispanic white men earn in the previous year alone. This is due to Latina women earning, on average, 54 cents for every dollar their white male counterparts make. It is worth noting that while all women experience a pay gap, Latino women face the worst income disparity at 54 cents. Women, as a whole, earn 80 cents on the dollar, while other ethnicities earn between 59 cents and 85 cents on the dollar. This persistent gender-based wage gap harms Latina women, their families, and the economy in ways that contribute to many systemic problems, including food insecurity, evictions, and homelessness, and difficulty securing reliable transportation and employment. Women make up almost half of the workforce and are the sole or co-breadwinner in half of American families with children. If the wage gap experienced by Latina women is eliminated, they would earn enough income in a single year to afford 27 months of rent, three years of childcare, or 193 additional weeks of food. Needless to say, this would represent a substantial positive impact for their families, for their neighborhoods, and for their city. I want to thank each of you for being here today to help raise awareness of the wage gap and for working with local partners here in Columbus to take action together to close the wage gap for Latina women and all women in our city. I want to thank Sandra Lopez in our Community Engagement Office for helping to put together this event today and this important recognition of November 2nd, which is this Thursday. Before I turn the mic over to you, Monica, I'd like to see if there are any comments from my colleagues. And I will move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Wonderful. Monica, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, Council President Klein, and members of Columbus City Council for passing this resolution in recognition of Latina Equal Pay Day, which is a day that we will unfortunately recognize later this week. I'm Monica Sarzuela. I'm the Advocacy and Community Outreach Manager at the Women's Fund of Central Ohio. I'm also a Latina, and I am proud to call Columbus my home. At the Women's Fund, we spark conversations, connect people and organizations, and influence the opportunity for economic empowerment and leadership for women and girls. The issue of pay equity is one of our key priority areas as an organization. You've probably heard of the statistic that women, on average, are paid 80 cents to every dollar a man earns. But what we so often do not hear is that when you look at the wage gap through an intersectional lens, women of color are impacted even more so. A few months ago, this body adopted a resolution recognizing Black Women's Equal Pay Day. As Black women are paid 67 cents on the dollar and must work 19 months to make what a white male makes in a year. But today, we're here to recognize Latinas, the most adversely affected by the gender pay gap, where, on average, Latinas earn 54 cents for every dollar a white man earns. That means Latina women have to work 11 months, almost an entire calendar year, to make up that difference. On average, a Latina in Ohio stands to lose over $790,000 over their lifetime because of the wage gap. And that's money that could be spent buying a house, paying for childcare, or sending their children to college. The bottom line is that if we are to close the wage gap, it will lead to greater economic security and decreased poverty rates for women and their families in our community. We say that women's issues are community issues and that by improving economic empowerment for women, we are improving our community as a whole. At the Women's Fund, we will continue to build awareness and educate the community that wage discrimination exists, and through our research and advocacy work, we hope to make a difference. I want to thank our city leaders, including Mayor Ginther, First Lady Shannon Ginther, the Columbus Women's Commission, and you, members of Columbus City Council, for taking a stand on reducing the gender pay gap in Columbus. We're grateful to live in a community where our elected officials, our community leaders, and our business community want to work together to create lasting social change. Thank you again. And with that, I will turn it over to Azlin.
Thank you, President Klein and councilmembers. I am Azlin Rodriguez and the Chief Operating Officer of WELD. WELD stands for Women for Economic and Leadership Development. WELD's mission is to develop and advance women's leadership to strengthen the economic prosperity of the communities we serve. In March of this year, a bronze statue depicting a Latina girl known as "The Fearless Girl" was placed facing the Charging Bull, or Wall Street Bull statue. The plaque below the statue states, "Know the Power of a Woman in Leadership." She, all caps, makes a difference. "The Fearless Girl" is meant to send a message about workplace gender diversity and encourage companies to recruit women to their boards. To WELD, she also symbolizes the pipeline to pay equity that we create for other women and girls. The pipeline and charge that we stand for is pay equity, equal pay for equal work. Period. Thank you.
President Klein and councilmembers. My name is Laire Marin Markham, and I work for the Ohio Latino Affairs Commission, but I'm here representing the Latina Mentoring Academy of Ohio, as well as the Columbus Hispanic Chamber. I'm also on the Board of the Education Foundation for the Southwestern School District. We are Latinas. We need leadership. We need education. We need to make a better pay. As Latinas, we all know that we are at the bottom of the food chain when it comes to equal pay. We just are here to thank you for opening the door to minority women. This helps not only to build awareness, but also to open the door for our future minority women leaders to have more hope and to focus on our goals and dreams in this great city of Columbus. Thank you for this resolution. Thank you, Columbus.
Good evening, city councilmembers. My name's Erin Beck. I'm with the mayor's office and also representing the Columbus Women's Commission this evening. So Shelley Byting, our executive director, was feeling under the weather, so unfortunately she couldn't be here this evening. But thank you for recognizing this important issue to our community. It's certainly a priority of the mayor's office and the Columbus Women's Commission. I believe each of you received an email invite, but I wanted to personally invite you to an initiative that we're excited to announce on Thursday at 10:00 at the YWCA, and it speaks to pay equity issues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution this evening. Would Ms. Kristin McKinley please approach the podium? Resolution 0293X2017 to celebrate 40 years of Central Ohio Crime Stoppers and recognize their contribution to the safety of the city of Columbus. Whereas the Central Ohio Crime Stoppers founded in 1977 to promote the welfare of communities throughout the country and to lessen the burdens of federal, state, and local governments, and whereas Crime Stoppers is a vital three-way link between law enforcement, news media, and the general public to foster working together to solve crime, and whereas Crime Stoppers programming includes an anonymous tip hotline, a most wanted program in finding fugitive felons, promoting student Crime Stoppers programs in high schools and college campuses, and more, Crime Stoppers has a 95% conviction rate of cases solved by tips to the program nationwide. Whereas 40 years of partnership between the Columbus Division of Police and the neighborhoods and residents have greatly contributed to the safety of the city of Columbus and therefore been resolved by this council, the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize Central Ohio Crime Stoppers for 40 years of helping keep our community safe. If there are no questions, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
With that, Ms. McKinley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown, President Klein, councilmembers. I appreciate it. My name is Kristin McKinley. I'm the president of Central Ohio Crime Stoppers Board. We are thrilled that we have been able to serve as this community, as well as others, for the past 40 years and hope to continue to do so. With that said, we just finished our annual breakfast and our second Shred It event. So we hold two Shred It fundraisers a year, a golf outing, and a breakfast. We are a working board, so we don't have any volunteer membership. We hope to build our program and appreciate the city's support in that. And I would invite everybody to get out their mobile devices and download the P3 app, which is how we're now taking tips for unsolved crimes, and they are anonymous, and you can two-way communicate with us directly anonymously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Klein. This evening, I'd like to invite Mr. John Rush and the John Rush team, as well as the Neader family to come to the podium. I have Resolution 0290X-2017, which is to present Mr. John Rush with the Reese Neader Memorial Award for Entrepreneurship and Social Change. As we know, Reese Neader was a staple for the Columbus community, who rallied entrepreneurs to create their own small businesses. Reese connected small businesses to capital and networking in an effort to improve our neighborhoods. Last year, we lost Reese at the age of 34, and to carry on his legacy, this council created the Reese Neader Memorial Award for Entrepreneur and Social Change. This quarter's Reese Neader Memorial Award is presented to Mr. John Rush. Mr. Rush has spent his career providing employment opportunities for the less fortunate through his social enterprises. I'm honored to recognize you, Mr. Rush, for all that you've done for our community, and you certainly embody what we thought the spirit of this award is. And before I move for passage, I'm going to ask any of my colleagues, do they have any comments? President Protam Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. John, thank you for your service in this community, especially in regards to working with individuals to provide them with a second opportunity. That individuals that have had, been in a situation where they may have been involved in the criminal justice system, that you have worked with these individuals to give them a second and a third chance for them to move forward in their lives. And so I just appreciate the work that you're doing in our community to change lives.
Thank you. Before, John, I'll have you speak. I would also like to, Mom or Dad, would you like to say anything? Reese's mom and dad have joined us again for the award, but we just want to say that we acknowledge, and again, this is our way on council of honoring Reese, who admits so much to our community. With that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Mr. John Rush.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Harding. President Klein, thank you so much, city council. You guys are awesome. I don't know what type of instruction. I know with eight kids, we're constantly reminding our kids how to keep their room clean, and Reese was very creative about having us come and clean his space when he was here, and I'm sure he would have got reprimanded quite frequently. But he was a great guy, a great friend. We both grew up in Appalachia. We both had trailer park stories to share together. We both had a diversity of perspectives as it relates to how to impact society in a positive way, and he was truly a good friend to be with. We at Clean Turn, and she has a name, Cleaning Services, could not do what we do without the support of city council, the city, the business community, the nonprofit community. It really takes that triangular relationship between nonprofit, private, and public sectors working together to accomplish anything that's sustainable and worthwhile. And so we are so appreciative of your partnership, your commitment to us and to this city and to the common good. So thank you so much for this reward and this recognition.
John, would you introduce your team that you have with you?
Yes, I'd be glad to. So we, this is three of our team members from a team of about 80 current employees. These three ladies are actually working the night shift. I'm going to have you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, my name is Jeanette O'More.
Hi, my name is Jessica Youngblood.
Hi, my name is Jamie Brown.
My name's Jimmy Schoenfeld, Director of Finance with Clean Turn.
Well, welcome to council, and congratulations, John. This is a much-earned and small recognition of the work that you do in our community.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening, I have Resolution 0286X-2017 to recognize Bishop Herman Dean Ware Jr. as a newly appointed pastor of the Oakley Full Gospel Baptist Church, and I would now like to move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Welcome to the podium, Bishop Ware and Deacon Ragland. Briefly, I'd just like to go over a few of your facts and background. Bishop Ware was born and raised in Chicago, Illinois. He's a senior pastor of Oakley Full Gospel Baptist Church, and only the seventh pastor to lead Oakley since 1896. He graduated cum laude from the University of Missouri in Columbia, and he continues to spread the gospel and utilize his knowledge throughout the world. So on behalf of council, I welcome you to Oakley Baptist and to Columbus, and the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Protam, councilpersons. Thank you so much for the resolution. I represent the church with Deacon Ragland at my side. I just want you to know, whenever you need Oakley, whenever you need a controversial pastor, don't be afraid. The problems that we face in our society cannot be silenced, and the church should not be silent at this point. We are losing way too many people for insignificant reasons, and I promise, if you come by, to shake your hand, but I promise to also get your hands dirty with some work. Deacon Ragland.
Thank you, Council President, Ms. Protam, Councilwoman Page, members of council. It feels good to be back in council chambers today and see so many friends and family. We were just endeared to Bishop Ware when we first met him, and one of the things that he is committed to doing is helping us to go about the work of resurrecting the West Side and the Hilltop specifically. As you know, our church has been on the Hilltop for 121 years, and we are actively involved, as with all of you, in doing the things that are necessary to bring the Hilltop back to where it needs to be. We look forward to our work with you together, and I'm just excited that he is here, and thank you very much for the resolution. Happy birthday, Angie. Good to see you.
And Deacon Ragland or Bishop Ware, if you could speak briefly about the installation service that I believe will be this Sunday.
Absolutely. You are all welcome to attend. The entire city is welcome to attend and celebrate the official installation for Bishop Ware. It will take place at Oakley Full Gospel Baptist Church. That's 3415 El Paso Drive at 4:00 PM this Sunday. So once again, Oakley Full Gospel Baptist Church, 3415 El Paso Drive at 4:00 PM. You are welcome to attend. We will have a high time in the Lord, and we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. If Victor Peoples could come forward. I've invited Victor to come tonight to share with us information about the 10th Annual Pre-Thanksgiving Dinner happening on November 19th at the Barnett Rec Center. I'm hoping he'll also speak about the 7th Annual Supportive Family Holiday Cheer Program on December 24th. I know it's a little early to think about Thanksgiving, but given our schedule, this was going to be the best time before the event. Over the past 10 years, the Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated has collaboratively provided thousands of meals and hundreds of toys for families that otherwise would go without during the holiday season. They've been a tremendous asset to those in our community who need help during the holiday season and can use all of our support by becoming a sponsor of the events, or by donating a gift in kind, or prepared dishes, toys, canned foods, or anything our community is willing to step up for. So Victor, with that introduction, I'll turn the podium over to you to talk about the event.
So, good evening, President Klein. Always a pleasure. Stenziano, Councilmember Stenziano, I appreciate the recognition. Kind of sort of feel like I'm, kind of sort of my little, not second, but maybe third or fourth home. So I do appreciate all members of council today. I'm here to speak about our Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated Alpha Eight Omega Alumni Chapter and the Beta Mu Undergraduate Chapter at the Ohio State University, 10th Annual Pre-Thanksgiving Day Dinner. We first of all would have to be remiss if we did not thank Teresa Featherstone, who works at Barnett Recreation Center, who has provided the Barnett Recreation Center to host this event for the past seven years. With that being said, this is our seventh, 10th year, and as we continue to grow, we continue to need more dollars, sponsorship, food, canned goods, and stuff of that nature. As Councilmember Stenziano has mentioned earlier, we have fed thousands, I could have given a running count, but we have fed thousands of individuals during this event. Additionally, we have provided hundreds of Thanksgiving baskets for families that otherwise would go without during the holiday season to take home for Thanksgiving. With our, I mean, our Christmas event, this will be our seventh year during the Supportive Family Holiday Cheer Program, and during that program, we provide toys and a food basket for families, once again, that would otherwise go without during the holiday season. I also have to mention the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Gamma Zeta Zeta Chapter, the men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Alpha Rhel Lambda Chapter, and Buckeye Health, and all the other members, community members, that have provided donations, sponsorship, and stuff of that nature for this cause. So I know while we were here, I passed out some information to all of y'all in the back. Yeah. So somebody has a credit card or something that can say, hey, we're here to donate as well, because it takes support from members of our community and stuff of that nature to help this continue to grow.
So thank you, Victor. Could you remind folks where they could look if they want to get more information or to donate?
So, as far as information, you can go to www.iptalpha8omega.org, or I could give you my Facebook page, or various members of our chapters' Facebook pages who have been sending the information out as well. But I did provide a little copy for individuals to see, and the information is also listed on there.
Really appreciate.
But we will be at Barnett Recreation Center on Sunday, November 19th, beginning at 3:00 PM. But we'll take donations anytime you decide to go send it.
Really appreciate taking the time to come down and the impact you all continue to make throughout our community, and we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, President Klein. I'm going to ask Chuck Garing from the present CEO of Lutheran Social Services, I don't know if Kim Hurley is coming down, and Michelle Jones to come to the podium. And I have Resolution 0258X-2017. It's to declare October of 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Columbus, and to recognize the Columbus Care Clinic for their advocacy and their efforts to raise awareness regarding breast cancer in Columbus and Central Ohio. Whereas each year, more than 200,000 American women are diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States, and whereas breast cancer is the most commonly reported cancer by women in the state of Ohio, regardless of race, accounting for 28% of cancer diagnosed in women. Whereas the risk of developing breast cancer increases with age, with approximately 96% of the women who are diagnosed with breast cancer being age 40 or over. And whereas breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death among women, ranking just behind lung cancer, it should be noted that since 1989, the mortality rates have steadily declined in women, with the largest decrease in cancer rates occurring in young women. And whereas there have been numerous studies which have shown that early detection saves lives and increases the options for treatment. Whereas breast cancer is a more curable disease than it was 30 years ago due to increased awareness, improved treatment options, as well as improved mammography screenings, which helps detect breast cancer early. Whereas the Columbus Cancer Clinic was founded in 1921 by Mrs. Samuel Carrie Nelson Black with the assistance of two physicians, Dr. James Baldwin and Dr. Andre Krati, as Mrs. Black believed that the control of cancer was a civic, a civic responsibility. And whereas the Columbus Cancer Clinic encourages women to take steps to reduce breast cancer, thus helping them to get well, for women who are diagnosed with breast cancer, the Columbus Cancer Clinic provides information, emotional support, which guides them through each step of their experience, as well as day-to-day assistance, ultimately helping them to stay well. And whereas the Columbus Cancer Clinic is committed to promoting cancer prevention, early detection, year-round advocacy for those facing this disease, and partnering with community stakeholders to assure that quality cancer care and services are provided in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, this council does hereby recognize the importance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and applauds the Columbus Care Clinic for their work at raising awareness regarding breast cancer in Columbus and Central Ohio. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I also want to share before President Garing speaks that through our Health and Human Services Fund, we fund the home care support for individuals that, at the Columbus Clinic for about $46,000 every year. So Chuck, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for the proclamation. We greatly appreciate it. As you noted, we are, first of all, Life Care Alliance, not, you had mentioned Lutheran Social Services. You've got too many words on your page, because I know you know that. But Life Care Alliance and the Columbus Cancer Clinic have been serving Central Ohio for a long, long time. We go back to 1898, and the Columbus Cancer Clinic goes back to 1921, as you noted. And I don't know if people know, but we were actually the first free cancer clinic in the United States of America, right here in Columbus, Ohio. Carrie Nelson Black, go ahead, and you can applaud. Carrie Nelson, and in 2005, we merged as agencies, so we've got the whole thing right now. The Columbus Cancer Clinic does a lot. We took over, we were given over 1,000 clients last year from the major hospital systems here in town to do the follow-up care and care for those who are underinsured or uninsured, allowing them to get care. And we can get them to very specific care if they need it, and we often find some very severe cases as we go through our work. As you said, we provide wigs and prostheses, a very We also provide, we have one of the newest digital mammography units in the state of Ohio. We have a doctor, Dr. Catherine Siren, who comes down from her practice a day a week and does biopsies and diagnostics in our facility, et cetera. So we give out medical equipment, whatever it is, just trying to help them stay in their own home. And if I may, I'm going to give over now to Kim Halsey, our Outreach Director, to tell you about a couple of clients that we might have.
Okay. My role is twofold at the Columbus Cancer Clinic. I go out in the community and provide breast health education to people, to let them know what's normal for them, and most importantly, where they can go to get help. Not everyone has great insurance, and I especially go to neighborhoods where people don't, and I tell them, if you need a mammogram, you can come to us. If you can't pay for it, we're going to find resources. If you can't speak the language, we're going to have an interpreter. If you can't find transportation to come to us, we're going to send a cab and bring you, because we've got to knock these cancer death rates down. And by doing early detection and screening, that's how we're going to accomplish that. On some personal stories that I've encountered, just in the last, I would say, month, I've had a lady come in who told me that she went to her son's soccer game, and while she had had a mastectomy and had a prosthesis, she didn't have a bra with a special pocket, and she bent down at her son's soccer game and her prosthesis fell out on the grass. I've had women come in, and I ask them how they're doing with their supplies, and they're lifting family members to and from the bathroom to the living room because they can't afford a wheelchair. I've had other patients with colostomies that are desperate and getting ready to use Ziploc bags and Scotch tape because they can't afford colostomy bags. Day in and day out, we are practically meeting the needs of cancer patients here in Columbus. And we just need to get the word out that we're here. Over and over again, when I go speak, I say, how many of you here are aware of what we do? And by and large, they don't know, so help us spread the word. We're not going to turn anyone away based on their ability to pay, and we're going to do everything we can to help them throughout their process with breast cancer or any other kind of cancer through our home care support. Thank you.
Don't leave, I have to give you your resolution, Chuck, but I, I just wanted to say, thank you. And can you also give the phone number, before I say a couple of words, of the phone number so that individuals would need the services, that they know who they could call?
It's 614-263-5006.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming down, and I just encountered someone recently who was diagnosed with breast cancer, and they had not, first of all, they hadn't gone to the doctor to get a mammography in years. And consequently, by the time they went, it certainly was at a, you know, at a, I think, a stage, a stage further off than, you know, would hope that you would want an early detection. But also, it was interesting because the conversation was about, I have to decide, it's so costly when you have cancer, have to make a decision, do I not go for treatment because it's so expensive? And I certainly said that's not the case, because you don't need added stress when you have an illness like cancer. So I do appreciate the work that you do each and every day. We're fortunate to sit here because we do have pretty good insurance. And, but those individuals that don't, we want to make sure that they get the same level of care when, and when they're in a difficult time in their lives. And so I just appreciate the work that you do to help individuals in our community who may be going, who are going through a difficult time when they're diagnosed with breast cancer.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we take, breast cancer is the majority of the patients, but we take any kind of cancer, including male cancers, head to toe, the skin cancers, whatever it is, we'll take you, and we try to get you service, and we've been very fortunate in keeping a lot of people going and getting back to the community. Thank you.
And now I have another resolution. I'm going to ask Patrick Riordan, who's Executive Administrator for Apprentice Ohio, from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Office of Workforce Development, to come to the podium. I don't know if Joanne Youngs wants to come up also. Joanne, she's a Certified Workforce Development Professional, and I have Resolution Number 0292X, that's 2017, is to designate the week of November 13th through the 19th as the National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Columbus, and urge business, industry, labor, and government leaders to support apprenticeship programs and raise awareness regarding their contributions to our country. Whereas a skilled workforce is necessary to compete in the global economy and important to making the promise of a prosperous, growing American economy that works for everyone. Whereas the National Apprenticeship Act was established August 16th of 1937, creating a nationally-registered apprenticeship system as an important pathway for workers in the United States. Whereas the nationally-registered apprenticeship system was designed to offer academic and technical instruction, paid-on-the-job training, provide nationally-recognized, industry-recognized credentials, increase earnings, and develop a higher skilled workforce. Whereas an estimated 430 Americans participate in apprenticeships across the United States. Whereas 87% of apprentices find employment after competing their program with starting wages averaging $50,000 per year. Whereas studies have shown that workers who compete, complete apprenticeships and on-the-job training programs earn hundreds of thousands of dollars over the course of their lifetimes than those who did not complete such programs. And whereas employers also receive significant returns for apprenticeships, with the benefits that include an increased productivity, reduced waste, and greater innovation. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week recognizes the innovation and prosperity created by apprenticeships and encourages, encourages business, industry, labor, and government leaders to recommit themselves to supporting this pillar of economic growth and success. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby designate the week of November 13th through the 19th, excuse me, as National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Columbus, and urges business, industry, labor, and government leaders to support apprenticeship programs and raise awareness regarding their contributions to our country. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Mr. Riordan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Klein, and all members of the council. It's an honor to be here. Thank you so much for the resolution. The national registered apprenticeship system is something that's been around since 1937. The Apprentice Ohio program specifically here in Ohio is actually housed within the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Office of Workforce Development. We've been recognized and approved at the national level by the U.S. Department of Labor since 1957 to monitor and regulate all registered apprenticeship activity here in Ohio. In Ohio, we are currently second in the nation with a total of 19,307 registered apprentices. Each one of the registered apprentices represented by that number are full-time employees, receiving wages and benefits. They average a starting wage of $15.93 an hour, and their completion wage is $26.98 an hour. In Ohio, we've taken a stance to strengthen the educational component of registered apprenticeship by including all of the university system of Ohio members to be the classroom provider for this particular program. This program combines on-the-job training and the supplemental classroom instruction that an individual needs in order to have a career opportunity for themselves and to learn and master all of the different competencies within a particular occupation. We have 948 programs here in Ohio that run a registered apprenticeship program, and we are training in 235 different occupations. This is something that we continue to push forward with the leadership of our council, as well as our state government officials and different agencies, and this is something that is really being highlighted and moved forward again by, by our administration. So with National Apprenticeship Week, it allows an additional opportunity for not only us in Ohio, but the whole country to provide information, and so everybody understands these career opportunities. I would encourage anyone that is interested in learning more about registered apprenticeship system here in Ohio to visit apprentice.ohio.gov, as well as ohiomeansjobs.com. Thank you once again for your support and leadership.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, President Klein, and the rest of the city council. I do want to do a little bit of a plug for an event that we're planning that's right in line with the thought of exposing apprenticeships to young people, minorities, and women, growing the numbers of that representation within apprenticeships. We have an event planned for next month, December the 7th, at Fort Hayes, from 5:00 to 7:00. The main demographic that is focusing on are high school students and young adults up to the ages of 24, but anyone that's bodily able and interested in apprenticeships, of course, are welcome to attend. A number of trades, about 15 to 20 trades are going to be represented. There's even going to be hands-on demonstration, where some of the participants can take some things home, such as a toolbox that they created. So we'd like for everyone to spread the word and invite folks to come out and learn a little bit more about apprenticeships. And again, that's December the 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Fort Hayes. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protim. I do have one resolution. I'd like Morgan Hughes and Donnie Murray, as well as anyone else who's supporting Crew Nation that would like to come forward. That's 289X, 2017, to urge the investor operator and chairman of Columbus Crew Soccer Club to keep the franchise in Columbus and forego any exploration of relocation to another city. Welcome to council. If I can get a motion for adoption. Is there a motion? Has it been seconded? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Appreciate you coming down to council. I know last week, you asked council to consider a resolution. We have done that, and thus you're here before us this week, recognizing the efforts of the Save the Crew movement and all of the work that the fans and the great people of the city of Columbus have done since the announcement of the possible relocation to Austin. So we have a resolution here honoring the crew's history, honoring the fans, which are the great people of the city of Columbus who have stepped up in many ways in supporting the franchise throughout its history, the team itself, and all the great work and charitable work that the players have done in our community, as well as the economic impact and how much we appreciate, appreciate what the crew has done, not only for Major League Soccer, but also for the city of Columbus. So I'm going to turn the floor over to you. This has been moved, it's been seconded and passed. We appreciate the advocacy that you have done in keeping the crew in the city of Columbus, and know that the city council is standing with you, and Mayor Ginther, and the business community as we navigate these uncertain times, but have the resolve and the support of the crew who are going to be playing tomorrow, right? Hopefully in bringing us, on the way to bringing us a championship back to the city of Columbus. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein, and the rest of the council. The individuals you see up here today represent just a small fraction of the effort and support of the Save the Crew movement. We are graphic designers, CPAs, small business owners, programmers, retail managers, and so much more in everyday life, but we all share the same passion and dedication for the team, as it represents our sense of community. Our group has continued to grow and expand since the last time we've met. We've continued to add individuals to our member list, with currently over 3,600 signed up. We've received the support of dozens of local businesses, including Jenny's Splendid Ice Cream, Rooster's, Land Grant Brewery, Columbus Realtors, Heartland Bank, and so many more. Our members have only become more impassioned and have dedicated their time, talent, and treasure for no other reason than their belief in keeping the team in Columbus. Since we are but representatives of a movement, I wanted to read to you a testimonial from one of our members. We started going on the regular in 2007, when our oldest son was at Ottermind College. He started going to games in the Nordak, and he invited mom and dad to come along. And so we did, and we were immediately hooked. I was sucked right away to that vortex, that beautiful vortex of black and gold. So we got season tickets, and it was a way for us to be together as a family, because our two other sons were involved in the Nordak culture as well. And we had a lot of fun together and looked forward to those home matches. We have, my husband and I, season tickets, and as the kids have moved away, we hung on to our two seats. In 2012, our son was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and he couldn't come to games with us anymore after a while. In 2014, he was able to join us for the opening match, and then he got too sick to come along to any other ones. On May 24th, 2014, we had tickets for the Crew v. Chicago Fire match. None of us went up to it because he was at home, and we were all with him. The game was on the TV. Chicago scored a goal around 9:00 PM, and we were singing, "I Can't Help Falling in Love With Crew." I was holding his hand, and he crossed over. The Columbus Crew will always, always mean that connection. Later that summer, the front office okayed for us to put some of his ashes in the stadium and in the Nordak, and that will always be a very important and special place to me and my family, and all of his friends that continue to stay in touch with us. And we continue that bond through the Columbus Crew, and it's breaking my heart to think they are going to leave us. Just keep fighting. Save the Crew.
The powerful testimonial you just heard shows that the Columbus Crew is more than just a soccer team. It's a valued and vital part of this community. Without the various outreach projects taken on by the Columbus Crew SC Foundation, this city would be a drastically different place. Some of these endeavors include the Lyndon McKinley STEM Academy, the Soccer For Success After School Program, the KIPP Columbus Middle and High School Outreach Programs, the Kirk Urso Memorial Scholarship Fund, and the hosting of the Columbus City League Championships at Moffrey Stadium. Or, in the words of former Mayor Mike Coleman, "The future of Columbus and the future of Columbus Crew SC are tied together. We need each other to succeed." We know that AEP is lighting up Leveque Tower this week in the colors of black and gold, and as the eyes of the soccer nation turn to Columbus again tomorrow night, we ask that City Hall do the same as a sign of solidarity. Finally, I'd like to talk about legacies. Not the legacy of the Columbus Crew, the first team in Major League Soccer, not the legacy of Moffrey Stadium, the first soccer-specific stadium in the United States, and not the legacy of Columbus as a spiritual home of the United States' men's and women's national soccer teams. Instead, I'd like to talk about the legacies of each one of us, the people who are involved in this movement, both on the front lines and behind the scenes. It's important for us to understand that history will remember how this ultimately pays, plays out, both in the short and in the long terms. No matter if you're involved in this movement as a fan of the team, as a local business owner, as a member of city council, as a representative of Major League Soccer, or the mayor of the city itself, we all have our legacies defined by how we work to resolve our differences and keep this valued community asset here where it belongs. Since the first day of the Save the Crew movement, I felt like I was living in real time the book that will be written about this, page by page and chapter by chapter, and I've thought long and hard about how I can make sure that this story has a happy ending for the city of Columbus. I try to remind myself daily that in this book that will be written, there will be a final time our movement is mentioned, and that last section will define the legacy of the Save the Crew movement itself. So to all parties involved on every level of this complex issue, from the front steps of this very building to the immaculate playing surface at the house that Lamar built, to the meeting tables inside of conference rooms behind closed doors, I ask you to consider the last time your name is going to be mentioned in that book. What will it say? How will you be remembered? What will your legacy be? I implore every-
legacy of Columbus as a spiritual home of the United States men's and women's national soccer teams. Instead, I'd like to talk about the legacies of each one of us, the people who are involved in this movement, both on the front lines and behind the scenes. It's important for us to understand that history will remember how this ultimately plays out, both in the short and in the long terms. No matter if you're involved in this movement as a fan of the team, as a local business owner, as a member of City Council, as a representative of Major League Soccer, or the mayor of the city itself, we all have our legacies defined by how we work to resolve our differences and keep this valued community asset here where it belongs. Since the first day of the Save the Crew movement, I felt like I was living in real time the book that will be written about this, page by page and chapter by chapter, and I've thought long and hard about how I can make sure that this story has a happy ending for the city of Columbus. I try to remind myself daily that in this book that will be written, there will be a final time our movement is mentioned, and that last section will define the legacy of the Save the Crew movement itself. So to all parties involved on every level of this complex issue, from the front steps of this very building to the immaculate playing surface at the house that Lamar built, to the meeting tables inside of conference rooms behind closed doors, I ask you to consider the last time your name is going to be mentioned in that book. What will it say? How will you be remembered? What will your legacy be? I implore every single one of us on every single level of this to be the movement, to be the City Council, to be the team owner, to be the mayor, to be the city that saved the Columbus Crew. Thank you.
Thank you for your eloquent testimony. Do any of my colleagues have anything to add? Seeing none, we have the resolution, and we join you in your efforts to do all of our parts, do everything reasonably possible to make sure the Columbus Crew stays in the city of Columbus, and thank you for standing up and being part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about any comments from Mr. Dorian, Treasurer's Office, City Attorney Pfeiffer? I don't see any members of the judiciary here. We've already had one removal of a resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda. Do members have any other requests for their, for removal of ordinances? So we'll now, no? Okay. Thank you. So we'll now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2508, 2682, and 2750-2017. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 2732-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2792-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2373-2017. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2260, 2526, 2550, 2634, 2636, 2643, 2714, 2727, 2733, 2740, 2745, 2775, 2776-2017. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance is 2728, 2768, and 2769-2017.
Thank you, clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will you read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 287X, 284X, and 291X-2017. Finance Committee ordinance is 2621, 2645, 2658, 2692, 2696, 2705, 2726, 2749, and 2807-2017. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2693-2017. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 2746 and 2762-2017. Environment Committee Resolution 265X-2017. Administration Committee Ordinance 2704-2017. Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 2707, 2711, and 2765-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 274X-2017, and ordinance is 2512, 2593, 2599, 2607, 2608, 2667, 2684, 2716, 2724, 2748, 2752, 2766, and 2791-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2677, 2699, and 2736-2017. Housing Committee Ordinance is 2589 and 2764-2017. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2597 and 2663-2017. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2464, 2527, 2549, 2551, 2622, 2626, 2629, 2706, 2709, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance is 2609, 2627, 2718, and 2785-2017.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one speaker. It's Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Looks like you're speaking unknown on 2589-2017. You just could say your name, any organizations you represent. You'll have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. I'm not against this or for this. I have several questions. I know y'all talked about this action plan for four to five years. I would love to see it more like to 10 to 15 years. And my questions are, I would just like to know what's in this action plan, if it's involving Lyndon or involving anything that have to do with USA Government and housing and urban development. I know that y'all have passed this multiple times, year after year, but I would love to see something as an action plan for 10 to 15 to 20 years. If it's involving the city and other parts of the community. So if I can get some type of document to show where the money has been spent over the years and what's being done now for 2018, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shoney, if you could work with Mr. Wilkins to get him that information, you and Mr. Lombardi, we would appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of those items designated as consent? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Consent agenda carries. We will now proceed to the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. It's chaired by President Protim Tyson. President Protim Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I have ordinance number 2516-2017 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase anti-icing, de-icing equipment with the bill equipment, to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish the contract from the general fund, and to weigh the competitive bidding provisions of the City Code, and to declare an emergency. Director Lombardi, can you please share why we are waiving competitive bidding, please?
Sure. Thank you, President Klein, President Protim Tyson, and other members of council. First, I want to let you know that Director Gallagher said we probably won't be using any of this equipment this year. We don't think there'll be any snow.
Well, we certainly hope so.
But we have to be prepared, you never know. The reason why we're waiving competitive bidding is, in the past, we would do these as a line item bid, but this year we use the RFP process so that we can negotiate terms and conditions and better pricing, so the code does not allow for that at this time, and so that's why we have to waive competitive bidding.
Always looking for opportunities to save our residents' money. So ordinance number 2720-2017 to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize a move for passage. Oh, I'm just...
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We got way too hung up on hopefully not having to use any ice in the savings, right? Okay, let's, ordinance number 2720-2017, to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds with the Public Safeties Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Newcomer Concrete Services for pavement restoration improvements for the Division of Fire, to authorize the expenditure of $1,144,589 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes a contract for concrete pavement for parking lots and driveways at the following Division of Fire locations. Fire Station Number 6 on Maple Canyon Avenue, Fire Station Number 12 on Sullivan Avenue, Fire Station Number 13 on Arcadia. It also authorizes asphalt patching and sealing at the Fire Station Number 20 on East Fifth Avenue and Fire Station 21 on East Main Street. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2790-2017 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to negotiate and enter into a contract for contract energy supply to weigh the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, relating to the award of contracts through the request for proposal process, and to authorize expenditure of $1 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Director Lombardi, would you please share information about this legislation and why we are waiving competitive bidding?
Sure. Thank you, President Klein, President Protim Tyson, and other members of council. We use an RFP process any time that we purchase energy or try to get into contract with companies to provide electricity, but we negotiate with all the companies that bid at one time just because of the market, the way it is, so you have to negotiate with all of the companies that provide a bid. Normally, in an RFP process, you do not do that negotiation until after you've chosen a company, so because of that, we have to waive the competitive bids as part of the RFP process and allow us to negotiate with all the people who are, all the vendors who submit a proposal.
Thank you, Director. In this legislation, we're looking at contracts for public utilities because they expire in December of 2017. Is that correct?
Yes. So there are three suppliers that we'll need within the next six months. There are some contracts that expire in the spring of 2018. These are for facilities that are not covered by the Division of Powers service area, things like our water pump stations and some, very few street lights that are provided right now through a third party. So there is a contract that does expire in December this year that we will need to replace in the next month or so.
Thank you. All right. And the contract pricing options will be for either 12 months, anywhere from 12 months to 36 months, and looking at possibly adding a green power component for our city's sustainability objectives. Is that correct?
That is correct. We always write in those different terms just to see where we get to better pricing at which term.
Okay. Thank you. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2801-2017 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts for the option to purchase police uniforms and accessories of GOS LLC, to authorize expenditure of $4 to establish these contracts from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation is for police uniforms, police body armor and tactical gear, police leather uniforms and accessories, and miscellaneous uniform parts, and this could be, the estimated expenditure should be $1.8 million. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. I have ordinance number 2831-2017. It is to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a contract with Mary Haven in support of the Addiction Stabilization Center, to authorize the appropriation expenditure with the Special Income Tax Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation is for $100,000. President Klein?
Thank you, President Protim Tyson. I know that Sean Holt here is the director, please come up, Mr. Holt, the Director of Mary Haven. As he makes his way to the podium, I'd just like to recognize your leadership, President Protim Tyson, as well as Mr. Holt's leadership at Mary Haven, and the Adam H. Action Plan. And Adam H., the action plan calls for the city stepping up and supporting a stabilization center as one of our priorities. It has been my goal in leading the opioid action plan implementation to make sure that we are literally checking the list of everything that needs to be done, and our commitment to the community, and the partnership the city and the county has with the private sector and the public sector in order to solve this opioid epidemic and do our part. Mr. Holt, this is, I know, a big portion of getting on our way to hopefully, in an ideal world, a grander medical center that can treat, that can treat mental health and drug addiction and alcohol addiction. I know Mary Haven does a wonderful job, but the growing need in this community and in our country to address these issues gets larger and larger, and unfortunately, our insurance system isn't set up to make, make it profitable for our not-for-profit friends and the hospital systems to make this work sometimes. So it's stacking hands together to address this as a mental health problem, which is exactly what it is. A subset of that is drug addiction, which seen the proliferation of opioids rear its head and cause significant consternation and problems for family and individuals in our community. So, Mr. Holt, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein, President Protim Tyson, the council members. The goal of Stabilization Center is to stabilize patients in crisis and offer immediate access to treatment and ultimately, long-term recovery. Unfortunately, the numbers that we heard in 2016, there are at least 11 overdoses with four deaths a day. Those numbers today are higher. They're just not reported yet. Most of these patients that we're going to be able to see in our center have just been administered naloxone, and they're going to the hospitals, they're overcrowding hospitals. The hospitals have basically told us that they can't accept these patients any longer because they're, they can't treat them. And so we're very excited about the stabilization center. We looked across the country. There is no other center like that in the, in the country. And so we are looking to be very successful with this model, and only be able to take it through the state of Ohio, but also through the country as well. So thank you for bringing this forward.
We're grateful for your partnership, Mr. Holt, and we often have talked about how we, we've done a wonderful job in saving lives, and now it's time to change lives, and certainly part of the saving lives protocol is Narcan administration and then having a stabilization center. But the true, the true reform is going to be the access to, to long-term treatment for these individuals that have a relapsing brain disease. Do my colleagues have any questions? Why have the floor? Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Would you please elaborate on how many beds are going to be available at the facility?
Yeah, so there'll be 55 beds. It's a three process, it'll have three stages of treatment to it. It's an admission and triage that lasts anywhere from four to 24 hours. There will be a admission, like a detox center, that can last anywhere from one day to 14, excuse me. And then there'll be a long-term component to those 55 beds as well. One of the things that we're working on, as you guys know, 30 days, two months, six months, isn't enough time for these people, and so we're really working on long-term treatment for these people who come to us because 30 days just isn't enough.
And that's exactly the model we need to build, is having the access to longer-term treatment.
Yeah.
And talking to addicts, talking to families of addicts, it's the, it's the lack of access to rehabilitation, it's the missing piece of the puzzle. Unfortunately, that is also the most expensive proposition.
Yes.
And, you know, this is, I think, the abridging step that can get us to where we need to be to have the community conversation. As a matter of fact, the opioid action plan talks about in the later years, the creation of a state, of a, of a long-term rehabilitation center. So hopefully, this is kind of that bridge step in order to get us to where that is, to provide the long-term care, because as you noted, Mr. Holt, this relapsing brain disease, it truly changes the chemistry of your brain.
Yes.
And like any other disease, it takes a long time for effective recovery.
Yes.
So we appreciate your advocacy. My colleagues have anything else to add? I'm going to turn the floor back over to the President Protim. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you.
And with that, I, again, thank you, President Klein, thanks to this, to the, our council colleagues, and this is important work. It really will change lives and looking forward to, as you stated, the long-term program that individuals can get long-term treatment. And so with that, I ask my colleagues for their support and move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have on my committee this evening.
Thank you, President Protim. The next committee is the Environment Committee. It's chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have one ordinance in environment tonight. Ordinance 2666-2017 to authorize the Department of Public Utilities to enter into contract with JadeTrack Incorporated for the Green Spot Metrics software platform, to authorize the expenditure of $19,500 for the General Government Grants Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code. The metric software platform that this ordinance authorizes allows more than 17,000 members and growing of the Columbus Green Spot Program to access an individualized dashboard online to track their sustainability progress, and therefore, it's an important component of Columbus's overall effort to be a green community, one that acts as a responsible steward of the environment. Competitive bidding is being waived to avoid interruptions in service for the individuals already using the platform, and to allow for the continued improvement of the platform with additional new features and ongoing services. Any questions from colleagues? All right, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
May I move to Administration Committee? Thank you. Tonight in administration, the next three ordinances are a package that establishes the Columbus Families Together Fund. This fund will provide resources... This fund will provide resources and legal services to Columbus's immigrant and refugee communities who are facing aggressive and indiscriminate enforcement and deportation tactics. Columbus prides itself on being a diverse city, where more than 1 in 10 of our residents are foreign-born. Our Somali population is the second-largest in the nation. Nearly half of all refugees settled in Ohio are settled here in Franklin County. The immigrant community here annually contributes $345 million in state and local income taxes, $638 million in federal taxes, and $2.8 billion in spending power to our local economy. Aggressive deportation doesn't just disrupt our economy by interfering with these economic contributors, it also tears deported parents from their children, many of whom are U.S. citizens. This irreparably alters children's lives. It induces permanent financial strains on families, places children into the foster care system, and unnecessarily burdens state and local resources for the long run. What's more, many of our friends, neighbors, and coworkers who are immigrants do have meritorious claims to remain in the United States, including asylum, cancellation of removal, waivers of unlawful presence, or other legal forms of relief that could prevent deportations and the resulting harms to our community. In fact, case studies in Immigration Court have shown that when an immigrant has access to counsel, he or she is 10 times as likely to win a claim to remain in this country. Still, thousands of immigrants languish in detention for months and never get to see an attorney, simply because they lack the resources. This is the missing link, affordable and available access to legal services. The Columbus Families Together Fund fills that gap. The fund takes two approaches. First, provide an attorney to Columbus residents who are in a detention facility and cannot afford counsel, with a priority for those who are parents. This $157,500 grant will go to advocates for basic legal equality. Second, deliver community-based immigrant supports. This includes emergency planning for families, know-your-rights presentations on constitutional rights and immigration encounters, individual immigration consultations, multilingual informational materials, travel rights information, and parent-child coaching on how to protect oneself from hate crimes and bullying. $17,500 will go to CARE Ohio, and $10,000 to Catholic Social Services Our Lady of Guadalupe Center, to fund each organization's efforts in this area. I want to point out, in determining the direction of the fund, we relied on an RFP committee of experts to review proposals that came in. The individuals who submitted applications from CARE and from Guadalupe Center are here, Jennifer Nimmer, Roman Iqbal, and Ramona Reyes. And what they submitted to the city really proved that they're doing this work in our community already, they're having good results, and the need is greater than ever. And that's why they're receiving this funding. There is an additional $100,000 that has been committed by a national philanthropy that will go to help bolster our efforts here in Columbus. So this is a true public-private partnership. If I may, I also hope that beyond the hard dollars of this legislation, we're sending a signal here tonight. We value our immigrants, we welcome you, we know that the demonization of immigrants throws them into the shadows and creates a class of silent victims, and we won't stand for it. By enabling immigrants to live safely and outside the shadows, we increase the public good and the public safety overall. I want to thank my council members here tonight, particularly Council President Zach Klein and Councilmember Shannon Harden, who are co-sponsoring this ordinance. I also want to thank my staff members, Kelsey Ellingson and James Carmin, who were exceedingly instrumental in, in getting this legislation together. Huge gratitude to Brian Shin, who was our Director of Human Resources and Legal Counsel, who served on the RFP committee and helped make sure that this effort came to fruition. And I deeply want to thank those who told us their stories throughout the year and helped make sure that, as stewards of the public trust, we did, we took action. Are there any comments from my colleagues? All right. Before I move for passage, I'm, I want to say one more thing. I, you know, critics, I think, question whether immigrants deserve our help, and whether we should help those who weren't born here, or who came here without documentation, frankly. My comments before focused on the economics of being a welcoming city, and I, and I hope they spoke to that. But on the other hand, I want to talk about some of the values here, and, look, I'm a mother, there's not a single thing I wouldn't do to protect my kids. Not a single thing I wouldn't do to protect her from harm, to keep her safe, and to expand her opportunity. I don't know many parents who would say any different. But for many families, when they find their kids in harm's way, there actually isn't a line you can get into that allows you into this country. Those parents are here, they're our neighbors, they're our kids in our schools, and I fundamentally believe that the well-being of our immigrant communities is intertwined with our city's overall well-being. So by keeping families together, no matter their race, or their creed, or their country of origin, we live out the values of our country and of this city that we call home.
Councilmember Brown, just wanted to applaud your leadership on this issue. This council several times has stepped up to resolve our support for our immigrant, immigrant community, and to sometimes be a symbol, or speak of the, the symbolism of standing up and recognizing one's right to be, and our city as an inclusive community. This legislation goes a step further and provides services for those folks who need it most. And I applaud you, your leadership, but also the hard work. You've been working on this for a long time, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, and hopefully that it gives hope, but also help to folks in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and I will move forward and read the ordinances for passage. First, we have ordinance 2877-2017 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with Advocates for Basic Legal Equality Incorporated for the purpose of providing legal services for immigrants and refugee families in relation to Columbus Families Together Fund, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Public Safety Initiative sub-fund, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have 2890-2017 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Council on American Exlamic Relations Ohio for the purpose of providing legal services for immigrant and refugee families in relation to the Columbus Families Together Fund, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Public Safety Initiative sub-fund, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And finally, ordinance 2891-2017 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with Our Lady of Guadalupe Center of Catholic Social Services for the purpose of providing legal services for immigrant and refugee families in relation to the Columbus Families Together Fund, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Public Safety Initiative sub-fund, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, that's all I have on my committees.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation. It's chaired by Councilmember Harden. Chair Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 2564-2017 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with McLean Company for the purchase of one asphalt distributor, one chip spreader, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Ace Truck Body Inc. for snow and ice equipment for the Department of Public Service, and to authorize the expenditure of $499,086 from Fund 2266 from the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. Director Gallagher, would you speak on this legislation and why we are waiving competitive bidding?
Yes, Council President Klein, other members of council. We are asking to waive bid this evening because currently, City Code does not give us a provision to allow to use our, the RFP process to purchase equipment, and in this case, we wanted to use an RFP process so we could work through the technical details with the, with the folks that were applying to purchase this equipment. As we move forward with some of this equipment, it's going to become a lot more technical in nature, and we will probably be having to do this more often than not, just to make sure that we're getting the exact equipment that we want to best serve the citizens of Columbus. So we just ask for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 2721-2017 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $1,060,000 within the Smart City Grant Fund for city personnel costs and additional consultants, to authorize the city's Chief Innovation Officer on behalf of the Department of Public Service to approve additional appropriation funds in Fund 7768 USDAOT grant, Smart City, and to declare an emergency. This legislation appropriates funds for estimated personnel costs as well as for additional consulting firms that are being added at the request of USDAOT. This is to pay city staff and consultants for the work along with the, for the Columbus, Smart Columbus project. Are there any question or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 2787-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Service to expend $1,550,000 or so much thereof, as may be necessary, from the Streets and Highways Bonds, our general obligation bond fund, to reimburse the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service employs personnel that are engaged in traffic sign and signal, signal installation, pavement marking application, engineering, roadwork improvement, as well as design and construction. Project cost incurred by the operating fund are salaries, overhead, overtime, materials, and other direct costs. These costs are capital-eligible, and doing so is consistent with earlier efforts by the Division to reimburse its operating fund. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank, thank you, that's all I have on my committee.
Thank you, Chair. It is 6:29, we have zoning here in a few minutes, so can I get a motion to recess regular meeting number 53? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We are going, we are now recessed from regular meeting 53. We're going to take a quick break, and then we'll start zoning, and then after zoning, come back to Recreation Parks. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We'll now proceed to the zoning committee. Chair Page chairs the committee. All members serve on the committee. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our, our agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council. We allow three speakers on each side, and we allow each of those speakers three minutes to speak, and then additionally, an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, I ask that you please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. If Mr. Max Elme is present, I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. 2604-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332-035R3 residential districts and 3312-49, minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 210 through 212 Miller Avenue, 43205, to permit a mixed-use development with parking in the R3 residential district, and to repeal ordinance 1202-92 passed July 13, 1992. The applicant is Scott McKnight. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? I do not see the applicant. I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
2735-2017, to rezone 2100 Morse Road, being approximately 22.58 acres, located on the north side of Morse Road, approximately 490 feet west of North Town Boulevard, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Checkers Drive-In Restaurants Incorporated. The proposed use is a commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Norflin Community Council's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And our final variance this evening, 2668-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332-037R2F residential district, 3332-05 area district lot width requirements, 3332-14R2F area district requirements, 3332-19 fronting, 3332-25B maximum side yards required, 3332-26C minimum side yard permitted, and 3332-27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 989 Pennsylvania Avenue, 43201, to permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot and a two-unit dwelling on a new lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. The applicant is Laura Caldi. The proposed use is a residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Harrison West Society's recommendation is approval. I would like to ask for staff presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. The site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling zoned in the R2F residential district. The applicant proposes to split the property into two parcels. The southern parcel containing the existing single-unit dwelling will be developed with an additional dwelling above a detached garage on the rear of the property. The north parcel will be developed with a two-unit dwelling for a total of four dwelling units on two separate parcels. A council variance is necessary because the existing zoning district only permits one single or one two-unit dwelling per lot. Variance is for lot width, area district requirements, fronting, maximum side yards, minimum side yard, and rear yard are included. The site is within the planning area of the Harrison West Plan, which recommends single and two-unit dwellings at this location. Staff supports the proposed density for each lot, noting that it is consistent with the plan's recommendation. Additionally, staff notes the applicant is preserving an existing contributing building and incorporating it into the development proposal. The request is compatible with the recent development pattern in historic urban neighborhoods and will not introduce a new or intrusive use. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Could you discuss briefly any concerns that were brought up last week when we had this variance on the agenda regarding the refuse collection?
And I was not here, so I apologize, but I did get the rundown, so, from what I understand, there, there may have been some concern about refuse containers placed in the alley, and that the applicant was going to possibly change this proposal to address that. But this, with the development that's proposed on this property, it would just be the normal rollout containers that single-unit dwellings receive throughout the city, and I may have Dan Blechschmidt further explain some of the refuse requirements, since that's his department. But we, my 15 years in the zoning section, we have never But we, my 15 years in the zoning section, we have never had conditions assessed to placement of the rollout containers or where they can be placed on refuse. The zoning code only addresses dumpsters and screening of dumpsters and placement of dumpsters, not the rollout containers that single and two-unit dwellings use. Thank you.
Yes, and if I could just add to that, the, as in many areas around the city, there are single-unit dwellings that receive 90-gallon service and recycling service. So, there would be potential for there to be four 90-gallon containers and potentially four recycling containers, but there is ample space either beside or behind the garage where those could be placed on private property without blocking the alley. So, I don't believe there'd be any specific concern with that, with this application.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present and would like to make any additional I believe Mr. Max Elmy just walked in. And, Mr. Elmy, if you could come down to the podium. And I'm going to swear you in. I don't think you were in here while we were here. So, briefly, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Please answer, I will.
Yes, I do, ma'am.
Thank you. If you could please state your name and any organizations you are representing. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Max Elmy, and I present myself. I live in 995 Pennsylvania Avenue, which is exactly next to that property that we are discussing at this time. Last time I was here, I spoke about this just a little bit. I apologize for my lack of experience at this type of hearing, and this is my first time, actually, second time, attending such a hearing. Last time, I believe that after I spoke, the lawyer that represent the investor said everything up to the, according to codes and regulations. I do believe it's not, because if it were, they would not ask for the variance. And if I understand correctly, variance are granted in a case that complying to the variance caused severe hardship to the applicants. And I believe in this case, exactly opposite around. Complying to this variance caused great hardship and inconvenience for the current residents and the future buyer of that property. Because I understand this is an investment property, and the owner is not planning to live there. They're going to sell it later on. And whoever are going to live there, they have to live with this setup, actually. They're asking for, to put, actually, they create two lots, or the one lot, and they're asking to put four properties. There is one Victorian house over there already. They want to put cottage house on the back with access to the alley. And I heard some of the things that remark that they make, from my experience, it's not going to work, because exactly right behind that house, it was another carriage house. And everyone has problem with that. And finally, city had tear that property down. We had problem with at least once or twice a week. They would block the garages, they move the containers, they have no place to park, and all kind of problems. And I'm saying this from my point of experience, because there was a house right there, and they just tear it down about six, seven years ago. And another thing that actually they're making, they're asking, they're asking for minimum of side to be only two feet, only that much. They're planning to build about two, three-story building. There's about size that probably is involved, and you can just imagine how they're going to maintain and access that side of the building with only two feet of room on the side. How they're going to put the siding, how they're going to maintain the siding, how they're going to put the windows, how they're going to maintain the roof, and so on and so forth. So, they have to enter my property in order to get to that site. I'm only asking to, committed to state and regulation and guidelines that that neighborhood has. Everyone does. I don't see why not. These people can comply with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmy. Are there any additional questions or comments for Mr. Elmy? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was going to, I was wanting to come here outside. I apologize.
The applicant's representative present, Mr. Brent Racer, would you like to have the opportunity for rebuttal? Thank you.
Brent Racer with New Avenue Architects and Engineers. I have been sworn in. I wanted to bring up just a few of the, the things that, to make sure that I wasn't, I guess, miss speaking from last time. What I was discussing, we are going to meet all building code requirements that we are going to have for the proximity to adjacent lot lines, as far as the hourly ratings and things that we're going to have to do for the eaves and things of that nature, including exterior opening protections and things like that. So, we are, I believe, going for a three-foot setback. Part of the reason that our setback is so limited is the existing building that we are saving, that is on the southern property of the two, is larger than what is kind of typically seen in that neighborhood on either side of the street. So, that is forcing us, and you can see in one of the plan images, that we are actually having to kind of jog the site there, rather than going with two like lots. That's part of the reason that that northern lot does have a little bit tighter constraint for the property. The, additionally, the parking, what we've done is we're adding an indoor garage parking and an exterior parking to allow, to limit any impact that that would have on street parking. I know that's one of the big things we discussed with Harrison West during our meetings with those guys. My, our client is, has agreed, again, said that he would do everything he can to kind of mitigate any impact that would have during the construction process. This is a fairly, I don't want to say fairly typical, it's not seen in all jurisdictions, but we do a lot of Habitat for Humanity work that is very tight constraint, similar to this, and those things are always able to be kind of handled and rectified, kind of amicably, if you will. The trash receptacles, we actually went out and investigated that on-site. Everything that, for the pickup, is actually on the opposite side of the alley. So, we've got ample space in the garages for the containers themselves, and that will then continue to be rolled out and placed on the other side, and then obviously rolled back in after trash is received. So, we, we did investigate that for, for time. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Racer. Are there any additional questions or comments? Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
And are there any additional comments from staff? Well, seeing none, I would first like to move to take this variance from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I believe that the questions and concerns that this body had last week have been addressed. So, with that, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Any other business to come before the zoning committee? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 54? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We will reconvene regular meeting number 53 shortly. Can I get a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 53? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We now will go to Recreation and Parks. It's chaired by Councilmember Jaisa Page.
Councilmember Page is present.
Councilmember Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In the Recreation and Parks Committee this evening, we have ordinance 2380-2017 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Stage Line Mobile Stage Incorporated for towing, inspection, training, repairs, and safety upgrades to the SL250 stage bay and owned by the Recreation and Parks Department, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the City Code, Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of $75,000 from the Recreation and Parks Special Purpose Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
2618-2017, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Quality Performance LLC to conduct the third-phase evaluation of the Applications for Purpose, Pride, and Success Program, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $24,250 from the Recreation and Parks Fund, and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask Deputy Director Rakowski to speak briefly about the scope of this evaluation.
Thank you, Chair Page, President Klein, and members of council. Obviously, the need for the waiver here is that this organization did the first two phases of the three planned phases associated with this effort. This is a ongoing effort of evaluation, reevaluation of the comprehensive strategy, but, you know, behind the implementation of the APS program. So, as a part of this third phase of the scope is really to take a look at where we're at in implementing some of the strategies that were identified within the first two phases of, of the effort. Also, look at our data collection efforts and to ensure that, number one, that we're collecting the right type of, of data and the right, and going to the right places, as well as ensuring that we're validating that data properly, and that we're collecting that data in a uniform manner across the various service sites. We're also going to be doing some interviews with city staff and external partners out, city partners, to ensure that we can identify the successes that we've had in, in this new implementation of those strategies, and then also look at challenges and opportunities for continued improvement within the program. And I think most importantly, they're going to be doing case studies that involve youth that have gone through the case management piece of our program, and really to determine whether we've had the kind of impacts on those youth that we hope to have through the program, not only when they were in the program, but also whether we were able to sustain those positive impacts after they've been finished with the program. And we're going to do that through interviews with those youth, as well as individuals associated with the youth, and look at data that we have available, including school records, to see how their performance and whether it's improved within school. And then finally, we'll have a final report, and that report will really tell us where we're at in implementing those changes and strategies within the program to date, and make sure that we're meeting our short-term, intermediate, and long-term goals associated with the program, really just to make sure that we're measuring appropriately the impacts that we're having on, on youth, to ensure that we have the program on the right track.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
2678-2017, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Franklin Park Conservatory for the implementation of the Franklin Park Master Plan in the amount of $1,500,000, contingent on the 2017 bond sale, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,500,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. I am co-sponsoring this ordinance with President Potem Tyson. There are no additional questions or comments. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And President Klein, if I may move to the Housing Committee. We have ordinance 2761-2017, and this is an exciting piece that I am happy to bring before this body, and is to authorize the Director of the Development Department to enter into contract with the Ohio History Connection, to authorize the expenditure of $1,100,000 from the Development Taxable Bonds Fund for the acquisition, stabilization, and rehabilitation of the two buildings located at 290 North Champion Avenue and 1227 Granville Street, and to declare an emergency. Again, I am co-sponsoring this ordinance with President Potem Tyson. Initially, I ask President Potem Tyson, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. I'm excited to be able to support the Ohio History Connection. Certainly, I see Ms. Rita Smith in the auditorium, in the council chambers this evening, but to save those two buildings took a lot of work. I know, want to thank the Director Shoney and his team. I know Councilmember Brown, but all of council certainly were involved in this. But this is, these two buildings are important for the east side of our, the east side of Columbus. As most of the people know, that those are two buildings are part of Poindexter Village, and, which was the, one of the first affordable housing developments in Columbus, or in the nation, actually. And 77 years ago, Poindexter Village opened, and now those, Poindexter Village is gone. However, those two buildings play a significant role in the history of the African-American community, and these two buildings will become a, a museum that will certainly highlight the, the African-American community, as well as the, will honor the legacy of Reverend James Poindexter, who was a minister, a civil rights activist, and who was the first African-American on Columbus City Council. And he paved the way for the colleagues that are sitting up here, the colleagues of color, but really represented all council members, and just very pleased to be able to, the council was able to put in $100,000 into this project, and very pleased that the Ohio History Connection put this, put this museum under their umbrella, and really looking forward to moving forward and having this museum to showcase the contributions of people of color in Columbus, Ohio. So, thank you, Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Potem Tyson. Are there any additional comments from the Director?
Thank you, Chair Page, President Potem Tyson, President Klein, members of council. I got a lot of comments on this, but in the interest of time, I will try and keep them brief. I do want to thank literally every member of council, I think every single one of you engaged with me and with Hannah Jones on this project to help guide us as we tried to move forward in this, and that level of partnership with the administration is part of why I love my job so much. I also want to thank Rita Smith, who's here, and Jackie Barton from the History Connection, who has had to leave. I will say, you know, it took a very dedicated community activist together with the ability to implement that comes with the History Connection in order to make this happen. And I think our ability to bring some financial capacity to the transaction was important, but it really was that partnership between the History Connection and the Poindexter Foundation that really made this possible. So, I could go on and on and on, but I won't. So, I just want to say thank you to the members of council.
Thank you, Director. Again, are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Just one comment. I have to say that Ms. Smith, if I ever get into a fight, I want her on my side.
Yes, she is definitely a mighty warrior, and again, we acknowledge your presence and thank you for being here with us this evening. I would now like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee is Technology. It's chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Technology, we bring forward ordinance 2557-2017 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Columbus City Schools to provide a collaborative partnership for the provision of voice-over-internet protocol services, to authorize entering into a payment-for-services agreement with Columbus City Schools for the provisions of the above-mentioned services, the authorized waiver of Columbus City Code Section 329.34 relating to the sale of city-owned personal property, and declare an emergency. So, in the spirit of intergovernmental cooperation, the City of Columbus and Columbus City Schools are entering into a collaborative partnership for the provisions of voice-over-internet protocol telephone services at Columbus City Schools. Over the past several years, the city, through our Department of Technology, has invested and implemented a robust voice-over-internet protocol telephone system. Lo and behold, Columbus City School has a need to update their existing telephone system. So, rather than build a new system from the ground up, Columbus City Schools has determined that it is more cost-effective to take advantage of existing cost-saving opportunities by entering into a payment-for-services agreement with the city. As part of this agreement, Columbus City Schools will pay the City of Columbus, and the city will maintain, support, revise the shared voice-over-internet protocol solution hosting environment, and provide 24-hour resolution support. And finally, as part of this project, the Department of Technology may transfer surplus voice-over-internet protocol-enabled phone units to Columbus City Schools. Currently, our Department of Technology is phasing out and upgrading its phone units and has the ability to direct surplus units that we no longer need to the city, Columbus City Schools, and should be, if the Columbus City Schools find them, to be a viable and cost-effective option. I do know Michelle Van Dyke with Columbus City Schools is also here, and appreciate her and the her and the school district's ongoing partnership with the city. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage. Speaker's slip was submitted, but she didn't need to speak if we covered it appropriately.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all we have in Technology. If I can move to Utilities?
Yes, sir.
Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 2722-2017, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Ohio Health Corporation, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $400,000 within the Streets and Highways Go Bonds Fund, to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget, and to declare an emergency. The developer is taking, is undertaking sanitary sewer improvements west of the Olentangie River, east of Olentangie River Road, and south of West North Broadway. This project will extend the sanitary sewer system by connecting into an existing sanitary sewer in order to serve the new development at Ohio Health. The city agrees to reimburse the developer up to $400,000 to aid in the cost of the relocation. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
All in my committee tonight. Thank you, President Klein.
You, Chair Stenziano. Any other business to come before council? We do have five non-agenda speakers, which we'll take momentarily. Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 53? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned, and happy Halloween if we don't get to that, but we do have five non-agenda speakers.